Good afternoon and welcome to City Council briefing on May 6. Ms. Fister, will you call the role?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zappone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Klitschke.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Dillon is absent.
Great. Let's start with our current agenda. For our legislative, we're going to have to kick it over to our Policy Director, Mr. Wright, to walk us through since we have a number of amendments.
Sure. You want to start with ordinance 36517 on Transportation Commission?
Yes.
So, as it exists in the agenda, it's a nine-member commission with various citizen appointees, expert appointees, and so forth. The three amendments are as follows: The Wilkerson amendment would add a community assembly position to the commission that would be voting. So it would change the composition from nine members to 10 members. And as I say, add a voting position for community assembly. The Zappone amendment is a fairly technical one, fairly straightforward. It simply says that the integrated capital management staff are going to staff the commission on some of its mandates. So it just refers to integrated capital management in a couple places where it doesn't right now. So, and that was at the request of Integrated Capital Management. The third one, and Councilmember Cathcart might be able to expand on a little more, has a number of changes that it proposes. It would add two positions for a Public Development Authority Director. Both of those would be voting, so the composition would increase from nine to 11. And then it adds some data requirements, data-finding requirements. It, trying to think what else it has in there.
Yeah, the other piece to it would be, it sort of adds to their duties of doing cost analysis, benefit analysis, looking at economies of scale in terms of project, citing and implementation. And then the other was creating a subcommittee that would report to the overall Transportation Commission on technological innovation and material sciences innovations. So asphalt mixes, different technological innovations with regard to infrastructure, smart streets, that sort of thing, that they would bring back recommendations to, which is something I've long thought we should be doing a lot more of.
Okay. I'd like to say that you can adopt all of these if you were so inclined, and that they would be consistent with each other, but it would take some harmonizing to make that happen. So I'm not sure that I would recommend adopting all of them without actually deferring it, perhaps doing a consolidated amendment. That would be agreeable to every, you can certainly adopt the Zappone amendment without, you know, creating any problems anywhere else, but once you get into the number of members, which is what the Wilkerson amendment and the Cathcart amendment does, you have to figure a way to harmonize those, so.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just on that note, and I think there's still a lot of other probably like moving pieces with this as well as it regards the community assembly. So I would make a motion that we defer to the June 10 meeting for consideration.
Councilmember Bingle.
Sorry, there's a motion. Wait.
I was wondering if we could, there's no second yet, but I was wondering if we could do the Zappone one first? That way we have a new base and then don't have to consider that one again.
I would rather just defer the entire thing so we can discuss all these different moving pieces, and I don't think I entirely understand your amendment yet, so I want to have a conversation on that if we are going to do that.
I'll second the motion here, and then I also have some questions, but if it is truly just a technical amendment, I have no problem adopting Councilmember Zappone's amendment, but I would like to understand the implications of that. I would be in favor of considering the Zappone amendment and then deferring the other ones to get them in harmony. Do we have somebody who can speak to the ICM?
Spencer, want to do that?
So, hello, Council, specifically on the Zappone amendment, I don't know that in practice it would make a difference. There's plenty of latitude in the ordinance for staff to participate and assist the commission as needed. This is just really calling out ICM as one of the departments that interacts with the Transportation Commission on some very specific issues that ICM specifically has something to do with, so it's pretty straightforward.
Councilmember Cathcart.
So is it, maybe I'm misreading this, and this is just in the base ordinance here. If so, I definitely would support it as written. I thought that Councilmember Zappone's amendment changed the order of priority in terms of investment. So it says, you know, number one, transportation systems that protect the pedestrian; number two, transportation systems for non-motorized modes; and then it says, after those considerations, the needs of automobiles.
I can address that. So, the version that you worked off of for your amendments initially was an older version. When it was amended last week, it changed the order of priorities that was in the original amendment, so.
We adopted this last week?
You adopted that last week.
Oh my God, okay, well, that changes my whole outlook on this ordinance, so.
That's consistent with the priorities we've had in the comprehensive plan for a really long time, so I think that might be why that's there, and I know that I have a lot of constituents that feel passionately it should still be that way.
But I would disagree. I think we have said since Complete Streets, in fact, that we are going to treat these more equally, and this says automobiles will be the last priority. And I think that actually flips on its head what we have traditionally, how we've traditionally addressed transportation. It's been equal, multimodal, equal. Now we're saying automobile is last, so we're changing the priority, which changes my entire perspective on this ordinance.
Councilmember Bingle.
Sorry, I was just stretching.
Oh, you started, okay.
Yeah, I'll just say the Zappone amendment is just the parts adding ICM to it, so the rest of it's all the base.
Councilman Klitschke.
I just want to say the Complete Streets ordinance is neutral on all that stuff. It's really from the comp plan.
It's equal. That's what I would say, it's equal.
Well, there is a motion and a second on the floor to defer this till June 10. That's the motion that's on the floor currently. All those in favor.
Did we have a second to that? You did, okay.
And I was going to say, we can add mine into that. It doesn't have to go today, so it's fine.
And I mentioned this to Jacoby earlier, but I just want to make sure that my name is not on this for sponsorship.
Got it. All those in favor of a deferral until June 10, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes, abstentions, that is deferred till June 10. Thank you. And then we're going on to the establishment of emergency and the amendments on that one. There are three.
Okay. So you remember that the ordinance, as it sits in the agenda right now, provides that before the council can adopt an emergency ordinance that makes four findings that are identified in the ordinance that have to deal with a finding of suddenness and unanticipated emergency, also, among other things, that a referendum, if it was filed, would not interfere with public health or safety. What the amendments do is, and by the way, as it sits in the agenda right now, all four of those findings that are listed would have to be adopted by the council and would require five votes, which really isn't a change because that's what the charter requires. The Dillon amendment would say, instead of adopting all four of those findings, you just have to adopt one of them. The Cathcart amendment number one says that you have to make a finding that the referendum process would not interfere with public health or safety, and then you would have to adopt one of the other three findings regarding suddenness or unanticipated and so forth. The Cathcart amendment number two is strictly technical. There were a couple errors in the original one that's on the agenda. We have a heading that's wrong that needs to be fixed, and then I threw in some Latin at the end of the original ordinance, and we're taking that out and putting plain language in. And all of the amendments actually incorporate those technical amendments, so.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just to start, I would make a motion to adopt the second Cathcart amendment that Chris mentioned that has the technical changes for headings and just corrects the ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt the Cathcart second proposed amendment for technical changes, as indicated by Mr. Wright. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes, abstentions? That amendment is adopted. Let's go back up to the top. Let's talk about the, Councilmember Cathcart.
I was going to make a motion on the second amendment, the first one that was mentioned by Chris that I had put forward. And so, last week, we deferred this a week. Councilmember Dillon brought forward his amendment that, as Chris pointed out, sort of takes the four pieces that you need to meet, attributes that you need to meet, and sort of says, okay, you just need to meet one of them. The original ordinance says you need to meet all four. I still agree with the original ordinance as drafted. I do think there should be a high bar, because again, this does have a significant impact on the community when you do an emergency ordinance. And so to me, I felt like a good compromise between his amendment and what I was originally going for was to say, okay, look, you just need to express why it is that it's okay for a referendum to not occur, and so, or why it's important, I should rephrase that, why it's important for a referendum not to occur, why this truly needs to be an emergency ordinance to bypass that referendum option, and then simply acknowledge one of the other three as the basis for the urgency, the emergency behind it. So that was what I felt was a good compromise between sort of where Councilmember Dillon ended up and where I had originally ended up.
Councilman Klitschke.
So just so I'm clear on how this works, you're asking.
Sorry, we have a motion on the floor.
With a second?
We don't have a second, yeah.
Oh, sorry, we need a second. I'll second.
Thank you.
Is there a move in second?
So I can ask my question in. So we're basically asking for a couple of whereas's, is that what we're asking for? So that we are explaining why we think these things meet the criteria?
Yes.
Okay.
You mean in a future ordinance that would be drafted.
If we're deciding to do an emergency ordinance, we would add a whereas about how it meets one of the three and a whereas about why a referendum wouldn't be a good idea.
That's what my understanding, and I, Chris, is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. I think you would be taking the findings that are required by the ordinance and turning them into whereas clauses, so probably at least three or four whereas's would be added as a matter of course to any emergency ordinance.
Well, we know you like your whereas's.
You can never have too many.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I dislike both amendments. I think that the ordinance drafted as is is a really well-done, solid piece of legislation. When we talk about emergencies, and obviously I've been railing on this for a while, emergency should be something that's evident to almost all of us, and for an emergency to be evident for almost all of us, I think all four of those things would be met. All four of those asks would be pretty easy to show that there's an emergency here. So I don't think that I like either amendment. I want it to go forward as is.
Councilmember Zappone.
Yeah, I just had a question about, and this is in both amendments, the language around a threat, an imminent threat, that seems to be more narrow than the charter requires. Is that accurate reading of that?
I would say so, yes. The charter refers to immediate, that's the term it tends to, you know, uses in two places, an immediate need, immediate threat, and immediate harm. You're expanding this to, in some ways, to talk about sudden, unforeseen, unexpected, some other terms that go beyond what the charter describes.
And the second one, I pulled up the chart in front of us, I'll just read it so everyone has it top of mind. An ordinance passed by the majority plus one of the whole membership of the council designated as a public emergency ordinance necessary for the protection of the public health, public safety, public property, or the public peace as provided in Section 1981 may be made effective upon passage and shall not be subject to veto by the mayor. A second question that, it does say in here or, I guess, so it doesn't require the charter. Those are the categories, but the charter uses the word or and not and, so it is interpreted as any of those reasons. So again, that would be much more restrictive than the charter.
Correct. I think it'd be more restrictive, yes. I think it'll be a matter of opinion about how much more restrictive it is, so.
All right, there is a motion, Councilmember Bingle.
But not in conflict with the charter.
No, we already have worked with legal with this. They did not identify any charter with any of the earlier drafts, other than the fact that earlier drafts talked about a unanimous vote, and that was deemed to be conflicting with the charter.
Yeah, and the whole reason why this ordinance is coming about is to give some definition to this, because again, emergencies were just willy-nilly going out there when it was very, 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 very debatable and highly suspect that we were passing emergency ordinances. And so the whole point of this is to give some guardrails to the emergency ordinance process in and of itself, because again, as was bluntly stated to me and others at times, what is an emergency, I would ask? And the response was anytime we had five votes, which is a clear abuse of the emergency ordinance.
So I will say that we did a review of all the emergency ordinances that met the criteria of the charter, and it was not, in my opinion and others, abuse of power. So I will not be supporting Amendment One, and not quite sure where I'm at with Dillon Amendment either. So people keep saying it was abused, it was abused, it was five votes, but if you look back at the list of the analysis that was done, I challenge anybody to say that, you know, it was abuse of power. Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I would say the majority rarely feels as if it's abusing a proposal. Perspective from a minority might be, minority political party here might disagree.
Councilmember Zappone?
Yeah, I just worry about being more restrictive than the charter. Councilmember Bingle says that there's no definition, whereas the charter does provide a definition, and I think it's up to council to determine at the time if that is the definition, it meets the definition or not. I just worry in general, being more restrictive, seeing that's still about an imminent threat when that's more restrictive. I think it provides a city with extra guardrails that might be tools that we need in an emergency that won't be an imminent threat, but it could be a situation such as potentially a vote, a levy that we missed the deadline and we have to pass it that day, or the EMS levy would get rolled off. I don't know if that missing a deadline is considered a threat or not. But it's for the public safety, and that's why I'm saying the charter has language that already says it's providing for the public safety, but would it be more restrictive? I think we're reading into territory that is just unnecessary when the charter does provide language, and then it's just up to council to determine case by case if it meets the charter language or not.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just last thing I'll say is, I think the reason, and I've said this before, I'll probably say it again tonight, is, the reason why this is so important is because we, I think, have a duty to protect our constituents to some extent, and when we can take actions that limit and prohibit their personal power, their personal political power, their organizing power, it should be done for the right reasons and at the right times. And so one great example is the power of referendum. Not everything is subject to initiative, the power of initiative. A lot of land use stuff is not, a lot of utility water-related stuff is not. There's a lot of limits on what you can do with an initiative. And so your only basis for sort of opposing or pushing back on a decision that you don't like from this council is a referendum. But if we do it as an emergency, if we do it in a way that prevents you from having that voice, then that's not good for the constituents, it's not good for our community. And I think in 99.9999% of times, there isn't going to be a referendum effort because it's costly, it takes time, it's a big lift, but if there's something that we do, a future council does, that we shouldn't, then we should make sure that the community has that power. And so to me, that's just the most important part of this. And that was what spurred this compromise amendment, was to make sure that we're thinking about that referendum piece, because I just think that that is so important, that we keep our eye on that ball. So I'll leave it there.
There is a motion and a second on the floor to adopt proposed amendment Cathcart number one. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. No.
Oh, no.
All right, that passes.
So that was adopted?
Yes.
Were there two nays or one?
Two nays. I'm sorry.
Two or the noes?
I heard two.
All right, on to the Dillon proposed amendment.
I'm not sure you want to take it up. It would be inconsistent with what you just adopted, so.
Yeah, I'll withdraw it.
Oh, withdraw, okay. Got a motion to withdraw that amendment? Any motion?
No.
No?
There's never a motion made to do it.
All right. All right, well, that is withdrawn.
I know, thank you, Mr. Wright. All right, so now moving into the advanced agenda for May 13, we have a pretty lengthy consent agenda with only one item, and this item will be briefed by Dan Buller.
Thank you for calling this meeting on behalf of my one item. Item one is the blank agenda item, just kidding. For the 2024 paving unpaved streets, we opened bids a couple hours ago and are reviewing those bids now. A total of three bids were received, and the apparent low bidder is Shamrock Paving of Spokane for approximately $874,000, which unfortunately is about 25% more than the funding set aside for that project. We're evaluating the reasons for this. Two weeks from today, on May 20, we will open bids for the Local Access Grand and Overlay Project, which is funded from the same pot of money as the paving unpaved streets. If the bids for the Local Access Grand and Overlay come in lower than expected, we will request award for both projects as currently scoped. If the bids for the project we open in two weeks come in at or above the engineer's estimates, we may need to discuss scope reductions or funding increase. Because of these unknowns, I'd like to request a vote on the paving unpaved streets be deferred until after opening the Local Access Grand and Overlay Project, and that would put it because of the Memorial Day holiday on June 3. And I believe Kevin would like to say a couple things regarding budget. Okay, if he talked to you?
My question is, is there, would there be any benefit to, and is there any time, if we're going to delay this, to go back out for additional bids?
We have three bids from the three main paving contractors we got, and they were within on an $874,000 project. They were within $50,000 of each other, so they're within about 7%, so it's unlikely we're going to get anything different.
Okay.
Thank you. Just with this bid, these bids coming in high, I did want to take the opportunity to kind of weigh in and add to this a little bit. We're hopeful, as Dan suggested, with the next bid that comes in in two weeks, that collectively we'll be comfortable still recommending award of the unpaved streets, but it just speaks to the need to talk about the program in general. Those of you who were on council last summer recall that we had a discussion on unpaved streets. I know we have three new council members. It'd be good to have that discussion again. I can reach out to Jacoby and Council President to get something on a study session calendar, but as most of you are aware, the program has been budgeted historically at $700,000. This bid is a fair amount over that. I did forewarn you last summer that costs were trending up and we're unlikely to be able to stay under that $700,000 going forward, so it just speaks to the need to have a greater discussion on the overall program later this summer, so.
Do we typically apply for CMAC funds for any of this?
No, this is a really kind of part of the discussion and presentation. We talked about unpaved streets, this is really intended to be a really, really lean, low-cost program. Introducing it into that grant world, you know, now that sort of complicates things. Grant funded projects tend to drive up costs because of the federal aid requirements, those types of things. Not something that we couldn't do, but again, those are kind of all things that'd be good to, you know, talk about in a study session on kind of how the program is operated and the kind of principles it's operated under, so. That was all I had. Thank you.
So just, do we need to defer to June 3, correct?
Second.
They're moved in second?
I think Michael seconded, did you say?
June 3, all those favorite, indicate by saying aye. 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 Any noes? All right.
Thank you. And then moving into the legislative agenda, we do have one special budget ordinance, ordinance C36520, and Don Kinder is here from the administration on the three items that we'd be reallocating these dollars to if there's any additional questions.
Council, explain, break your big statement first.
Hello.
So we were looking at the proposals around the first two items and the reallocations of the funding, and I think council wanted a little bit more background on how, what was the mayor's intent or desire for those?
For the two relocations?
Yes.
So clarification on the intent of moving those services or?
And location.
So there are not, I mean, we, sorry, I'm a little bit taller. CAT had one property that they were interested in that has passed and is no longer an option for them, so they are back looking at locations. I do think they're touring one site tomorrow based on a message I got from Hallie today. I've not even had a chance to look it up yet, but they are very much in the look. My last conversation with Catholic Charities on location, they've got, the last I heard, they had put a PSA out and had had no response to it on a property. And the intent, we've been pretty clear about, is really to try and decentralize and decongregate that neighborhood, both for the people who are trying to access services in that neighborhood so they can do so in a safer space, but also to do some support around that gateway neighborhood for the businesses in the area as well. I think they're two different things in the sense that we're talking about closing House of Charity and opening a Catalyst 2.0, and then the CAT move is really to both shift them out of the neighborhood, but to also consolidate their current two locations into one location, which is also a safety issue with folks trying to cross division right now to get between their two sites. So that's the, yeah.
So I would just be concerned if there's not specificity on these funds, will they be able to be deployed under the ARPA timeline? If they're looking for new locations or building, we know it doesn't happen overnight, what that would look like, and if it doesn't happen, would we have the amount of time necessary to claw that money back and redeploy it?
I think we do, I mean, I think there is, we've been talking internally about how close to that 1231 deadline can we actually get without something under contract? I think we feel pretty confident that there's the ability to accomplish both of those things in the next couple of months, and I, if we see an opportunity, or excuse me, if we see a reason to believe it's not feasible, we're certainly going to come back to council and propose a different opportunity. We don't want those funds to go to waste for any reason, but I think we're hopeful that with the sites that they're trying to look at, that it's possible.
Councilmember Bingle.
What are the two sites that are being proposed that you've heard of?
For CAT.
For CAT or for Catholic Charities? What are the two?
CAT had looked at the site, I think as you all know, over on Springfield, that one, they.
The old Jules Helping Hands building?
Yes, and they were not successful with that. They are touring one tomorrow that I might have the address of, but I haven't even looked. They're touring a site tomorrow on Post.
Post and?
North Post. I don't have a cross street. I can Google it.
How far north or south on Post, because that'll help us.
I haven't even Googled it today. Literally, I got this text, but I've not looked, but they're just looking at it, but they've been looking, I mean, they've looked at probably 30 different locations across the region. Catholic Charities.
How far north or south on Post? Because that'll help us.
I haven't even Googled it today. Literally, I got this text that I've not looked. But they're just looking at it. But they've been looking, I mean, they've looked at probably 30 different locations across the region. Catholic Charities has looked at several hotels that are for sale. As you all know, they've looked at the Carlyle as well. I think the big thing there, when we've been in discussion with them, is that if that location moves forward, that there is an expectation and they have committed to building second floor or higher outdoor space so that anybody needing pets let out or smoke breaks from the inside of the facility are not doing that on the street front. And it would be almost the same use that that building has right now in it because it would not be a shelter.
But that does not come with the closure of House of Charities?
It does.
House of Charities closes?
Yes, that is contingent upon them closing House of Charity and selling the site.
Counselor McCattart.
So if it were to be the Carlyle as the location that they would move into, what would happen with the existing population at the Carlyle?
That, so Catholic Charities, my understanding is that Pioneer has begun the relocation process for folks currently living in the facility, and that's part of what Catholic Charities and Pioneer would be working out, is what is that relocation plan? Again, we're not at a point yet where I've been included in any conversation about that, but I know that it's certainly something that both agencies are very familiar with.
And do we know what the total project cost would be? I mean, if they're going to build outdoors, I have to imagine that's going to be a pretty hefty price tag at the end of the day.
My, I'm hesitant to give, my memory recalls, but my understanding is that the building of the outdoor space was about $800,000 based on the estimates that they had at the initial tour. That was, you know, a few weeks ago at this point. Overall, you know, compared to the 15 million plus we were talking about under the prior administration to rebuild a location, we're still well below what that cost would look like. To me, the most important part in this is a complete model shift that just produces a different kind of outcome and service for the community, but I, we
Well, and on that, so I think it was 12 million that the previous administration had said that they would support or help, help to support. And this council, of course, lost their collective minds, myself included, because we don't have that kind of money. And so I'm just trying to understand, part of that discussion, though, was that Catholic Charities had purchased land outside, either outside the city, they would never tell us where, but it was either outside the city or somewhere
It was at Geiger.
Was it at Geiger? Okay.
And they never purchased it.
They never purchased it. Okay. And so I guess my question would be, if that was the plan then, and they, my understanding from Rob at that time was they were going to raise a significant amount of money on their own too, in addition to the 12 million from the city. So how much is Catholic Charities putting into this project and how much is the city putting into this? And what sort of cost-benefit analysis have we actually done by just sort of moving the current issues over just slightly?
On the budget piece, I mean, I can't speak to Catholic Charities' intent. I know that they want to see about $5 million for the total project, which, you know, I think they see this potential ARPA allocation as the huge biggest, the huge first piece of that. Beyond that, we haven't had any follow-up conversations as we've kind of been waiting to see where this SBO goes. You know, the, I think the big piece is that it's not moving House of Charity two blocks over if it moves to the Carlyle. It's a closure and a sale of that location and an opening of Catalyst 2.0. Catalyst has not had the neighborhood impacts that we've seen in other locations. Catholic Charities does not want to be in the business of creating that kind of impact. That's part of why I think they're invested in trying to get this model change to occur. And I do believe that that's possible to achieve because it's already being used this way and we're not having those impacts in the neighborhood.
So maybe the piece I need to understand is how will they be determining who is going to live in Catalyst 2.0? Because Catalyst 1.0 was a curated group of folks identified to be ready for transitional housing. If this is simply moving the folks from House of Charity over, those individuals, many of them, are not prepared to live in a micro apartment or any sort of non-supervised location. So how is that going to work? Where are they going to get put?
I actually disagree. I mean, the folks that moved into the Catalyst came straight from Camp Hope. So, I mean, they came from tents into micro
But it was after a very long curation to determine who was suitable. And if not, then we were given some interesting information.
I mean, I think there was like, there was an identification process of who can be most successful where, but regardless, people were coming from tents straight into Catalyst in the exact same scenario. So I actually, and a lot of the House of Charity patrons, as the agency calls them, have been there for years. So I think a lot of those folks are actually well-equipped for this kind of living environment and will do better when they've got some safety and privacy to succeed with. Plus, it also enables them to do a different level of service provision than they can do in the current location because again, it's a different model. So I, you know, I think the assumption is that some of the folks currently accessing House of Charity would certainly be located in that new location. But there's also, there's a broader community conversation happening around coordinated entry and how those referrals would be made to any location, right? Especially as we consider, you know, Catalyst now takes community referrals from House of Charity, Hope House, that might be it. So those referral pipelines exist in the community. Our intent is certainly tap into that and say, who is ready for transitional housing that we can make space for in this model. But again, pending any kind of financial commitment, we haven't spent hours talking details because we've just been trying to figure out if we can even get this far in the process.
I have so many questions still.
We only have 30 minutes.
Well, I mean, I don't know how we get all the information we need then if it's not, okay, okay. All right. How did we come to the numbers then of 2.65 and 1.8 that needed to go if we, how did we come to those numbers?
My understanding, I mean, the original proposal was different. My understanding was that council wanted us to scale back and those were based on the types of price tags we were seeing for the properties agencies we're looking at and to get underneath the cap that council wanted us to get underneath.
So the proposal was originally more than this? Because I don't remember seeing that.
The press release had 5 million for Catholic Charities.
Yeah, but and then one for CAT. So if, okay, if that's what we're working off, I know that one. And so then 1.8, how did the extra 800,000 come to CAT in this?
I think that was based on the properties they were looking at that would meet their needs, were more expensive than we had initially anticipated. I mean, they actually operate quite a lot more square footage than I think we understood.
So when we're talking about moving to the Carlyle, because I know you're saying we're going to shut the House of Charity down, or we're closing down track, totally get it. That population then, what is going to happen to the population at House of Charity?
Well, so we are, next Monday at the Urban Experience Committee, we are going to present our shelter audit recommendations and kind of our next steps. Included in that is an RFP that would go out hopefully late this month that would help, one, spend down the $4 million that stayed allocated to decommission track, as well as some additional resources that we picked up for the 25 program near us, the Department of Commerce for emergency shelter. That would allow us to, one, pilot a navigation center and, two, stand up new and additional scattered site smaller shelters to mitigate the impact of those congregate losses. The bed count between House of Charity closing and the Catalyst 2.0 opening, we actually think we gain beds. And the Catalyst 2.0, House of Charity could actually serve couples as opposed to just singles, and we would actually have space for more people in the current building operates, is our current belief based on how they're modeling it.
So I hear what you're saying. It's not going to be a large congregate shelter, but a lot of that population could potentially end up at the Carlyle is, right, or in the other neighborhoods, which is what I'm, which is what I'm hearing from you right now. And I don't, I don't know that that helps us, and I'm open to some education here, but that area obviously is what it is. And if we're moving them to a separate part, if it's a similar population or the same population, I think those problems are still there. They just move with them.
I disagree. I mean, the model is so fundamentally different that I, I mean, right now, House of Charity is not open all day. You can't be in there all day, right? They're not, they're not a 24/7 location. When someone's living at the Carlyle, they have a home 24/7. So they're not hanging out outside waiting for you to open to serve lunch. They're open. You live there. You have a space to be in 24/7. That's a substantial difference than what's currently happening at House of Charity where they're kicking people out and having people line back up to come in overnight. So a 24/7 facility with private rooms, mini apartments, I think is what Councilman McCattart said, is a very different operation than a shelter that is night by night, kicking people out in the morning, letting them back in in the afternoon, and everybody is then there hanging out waiting to come back indoors. That's not what we're talking about at this location. It's this, the population that lives there now is the same population that we would be serving there in this model, and we don't have those challenges there. It's a fundamental shift to have a building open 24/7 with privacy that people can enjoy as opposed to a shelter that's not open all day. And if you do go inside, you have no privacy.
And Don, there will be support services, just like the CAT's one.
Absolutely, yeah.
There will be support services. So these people won't just be moving
No, it's staffed 24/7 very robustly with onsite services, everything else, yeah.
Counselor McCattart.
Well, I just, where's the operating for that coming? Because right now, House of Charity doesn't operate that way, so they don't have that level of operating cost. And so where would this probably a significant increase in operating cost?
It's actually not a significant increase on what they're basing their proposal off of. They have about a $2 million a year budget right now at House of Charity and operating that they can take directly with them to a new location. It's not, the funding works with the change in model. And some of the delta, we actually think we can make up for in a row contract that they operate through the Catalyst project where they're not spending all of their money. So it will be more costly than it is currently, but it will not be exorbitantly more costly, and there are opportunities to merge and leverage funds to make that work. So I don't think it's
How many people are we talking about? Probably, most likely, if it was the Carlyle?
I would have to go look. I mean, however, I
What's the existing numbers at House of Charity?
Well, they, under 100 beds. They've got some respite beds in the facility that are not night by night, and they have some surge beds that funding ends for on June 1st or July, June 30th. So I think their total, like, committed beds right now is around 80, and the Carlyle would maintain about that same number and add the ability for couples to be served.
So I think it'd be a really interesting exercise for us to look at track and House of Charity and this new option because I really am not understanding how they could, for 2 million a year, operate a full-scale shelter with probably 150 people. That's half of track and we're spending 12, 13 million at track. I'm just not understanding, what is Catholic Charities figured out that we never figured out or Salvation Army's never figured out with track to reduce those costs so significantly?
I mean, we've cut operating costs at track by about 40% since this administration came in, which has not been easy. A bulk of the cost at track is paying for outdoor bathrooms and showers that are unreliable and constantly frozen and not working. That's a huge cost.
It's about a million or so, right?
I think it's above that. And the meals is another huge cost because there's no kitchen inside track. So every single meal they serve has to be prepared someplace else, transported in and served on-site. So some of, I mean, frankly, like, some of the costs maddening at track is not TSA's fault. A lot of that is location-specific, and they have worked with us very diligently to bring that cost substantially down. I mean, we've dropped about $15 per bed per night.
I guess my point is, you know, we spent a million and five on Revive just to service track. And all they, and I don't, I've never really seen any outcomes, results. I don't know what the benefit has been, but we spent a million and five on it. And so for only 2 million, to operate the entire facility, provide wraparound services 24 hours a day, I just, I don't know that I'm buying the numbers. And so I'm assuming someone's going to come back to the city and say, we need more money to operate this.
Well, I mean, I wasn't here when the track and revive deals were negotiated and outlined. They're not good deals. I mean, I think we all know that.
I don't disagree whatsoever.
Yeah, so I mean, I think part of it is actually that agencies do do this work for a far more reasonable price point, especially when they're operating in a facility that was built for it. And that's part of what we're seeing is like, this facility is built for this kind of operation. It's why it's been so successful for Pioneer Human Services to serve this population in that location in a very similar model. So I think that's a big piece of it. And I will be honest, I don't think there was great accountability with some of those contracts in the past administration. I mean, we have made substantial gains, not because we've just cut beds. There's been a lot of accountability on there. And so I think that's part of it as well. And I do think some agencies, you know, have a different relationship with volunteer bases and donation, I mean, House of Charity's food is gathered primarily through donations from grocery stores. They're not buying it. And then they're able to prepare it on-site. So the cost differences are really, I mean, the facility makes a big difference. But I hear you. I know it's a hard comparison.
I'm going to Counselor Dylan, I'll come back to you, Counselor Bingle.
Yeah, thank you so much, John. I'll just, more of a comment, I suppose, recently spoke at the West Hills Neighborhood Council, and I think the intention with Catalyst and what we've seen and how the neighborhood has been engaged has been such a shift and a very positive outcome, and I hope that we can mimic that here.
Thank you.
Counselor Bingle?
Yeah, so is there, is there a way that we can just give this money directly to these organizations without going to RFP, without anything like that?
My understanding is yes, but I, Jason and Matt are not here. But my understanding is yes.
We, I have heard the same. We have really researched this. And yes.
And while I understand the wraparound services, totally get it, I feel like we still have plenty of Catholic Charities buildings that have a lot of issues surrounding them. And so even if there are wraparound services, I've seen a lot of facilities that have wraparound services. And so if the point of moving Catholic or the House of Charity was to get it outside of downtown and to help clean up that area, I don't think that we're accomplishing that by moving this here. That's my, that's my struggle in all this.
Well, I think that's where, it's really, we're closing House of Charity and requiring that they sell that location and opening Catalyst 2.0. I think that's a very pivotal distinction because I think if we were just moving an emergency shelter that was not open 24/7, there would be a much different level of impact. But I think the, if you go see Catalyst, and I know I've given you a tour of it, it's a different deal. And that's really what we're looking at every creating.
Counselor Pliski, Counselor
Yeah, I've tried not to get into the personal side of this and how it affects me, but my daughter's ballet school is right across the street from Catholic Charities. And so her teacher and the owner of that studio, same person, has been dealing with this nightmare for a very long time. And she's had varying degrees of success working with Catholic Charities to make sure that the area is clean and safe. But we're talking about little girls as young as three going in and out that door several times a day. And my daughter has been going there for many years now. And the difference is, these people will have access to bathrooms? You would not believe what I have seen dropping my daughter off, which means my daughter and a lot of other children, girls and boys, have seen it too. We have seen a lot, and not just because of lack of bathrooms. It's really bad. So just being able to keep folks indoors all day, give them access to a bathroom, that would make such a huge difference to that section of downtown right there. Because they are congregating at about dinnertime, which is when most ballet classes start, or right after school, which is after lunchtime when they've just left their meal, right? It's not just my problem, it's not just that ballet studio's problem, but I've seen firsthand for years the impact of the different models. And I live right near other Catholic Charities shelters, and there are some problems, a little bit of garbage. We've had some incidents, but nothing, nothing like I've experienced at the ballet studio. I taught there as well for a few years. So just please consider that. It's a big difference.
Counselor McCattart, Counselor Bingle?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think, well, one, I mean, we do have a proposition on the books that allows us to enforce certain things, to prevent things around children's activities. We should be enforcing that. But even without that, we have laws around camping, around shelters. We should be enforcing that. That would reduce a lot of that. But in the big picture on this, I mean, I really think, and I'm not comfortable with spending 3 million just to move location downtown, I think we should be requiring, frankly, that they're identifying a location that's not an equal or lesser sort of census tract, you know, like a low quintile census tract, and that we're looking at places that, you know, have not had to deal with these issues so much. We should be changing our attitudes about where these are going to go, and we shouldn't just simply say, well, downtown is where they belong. That has not worked out so well. And so I don't like this. I don't like the fact we're not doing an RFP. We had a situation, you know, or we have lots of providers who could be stepping into this role to help to take on some of the population from House of Charity. They could open a shelter, do something different. I don't think it has to be Catholic Charities. There's nothing that says it must be that organization that they can do this work. VOA, some others could be, could do this. I also don't want to see us end up in a situation where we, kind of like VOA, I kind of did, where they were able to get a real nice building, but then no ability to operate it because they hadn't thought about the operating side of it or cost changes and things happened and with COVID and everything else that really affected that. So we got to make sure that that's not an issue. And then the other piece too is, I think the county made a real big mistake when they effectively bought the Way Out Shelter for the Salvation Army and just handed it over. I think the taxpayers lost out on that. And so we shouldn't just buy a building for another organization. I think there should be some benefit to the taxpayers long-term. If that building gets turned over and there's a revenue generated from it, the taxpayer should benefit from that.
Yeah, there's no, we're not giving somebody a building in this scenario. And I would say, I don't think there are a lot of agencies who will do this, right? The track RFP had two applicants. We've talked to a lot of providers. This is not a space a lot of providers are trying to get into right now. Emergency shelter is a very difficult thing to do. There's a lot of reasons why agencies aren't coming to the table saying, please give me a shelter, right? That's part of why we want to go out to RFP for these smaller scattered site locations. Shelters are on board for that. We do have people interested in taking on that type of smaller, scalable work. And the intent is not to hand somebody a building. Any of these purchases would come with affordability terms similar to any of our other loan investments where you have to maintain use for X number of years. If you want out of this style of use, you must repay the city's investment and then the property. So this is not handing somebody So this is not handing somebody keys and walking away. These are long-term agreements, like we do with every other CHI just investment, where we've, we've never just given somebody a building and let them keep it and do whatever they wanted. It's, there's always, I mean, typically it's 25, 35, 40 years, actually. If, if you want out of that type of operation and you intend to sell, you actually have to repay us. So I agree with you on those points. And we're not looking at, at any alternative where it's, here's the keys and walk away situation. These are long-term commitments. And the House of Charity current location, closure and sale is part of that.
And speaking on this issue with the closure and the sale, are they going to be bringing any money into this facility? Because we're giving them $3 million. Do we know the sale of that facility? Do we need to give them $3 million? Can we give them half a million? Can we do something less than 2.65?
Not in the timeline that we're looking at trying to accomplish this then. And there is a need, I mean, the, depending on the facility they purchase, and again, there's, there's no done deal here. Rehab is typically necessary, right? I mean, even with Catalyst, we had millions of dollars in rehab that had to be done for it to be utilized the way we needed it to be utilized. So we, we haven't gotten that far into that conversation yet because we've been really waiting to see where this goes. But we're certainly willing to look at that.
The, the project, you know, them buying and building those kinds of things, that's not really a done deal. But next week, our, our financing of it is a done deal. And so that's the difficult thing for me, is that, you know, we were just presented with this sort of last week, 1.8 million to CAT, 2.65 to Catholic Charities. And so, which is a debate I all, all have up here on the dais and not with you. But yeah, thank you. I just, I still have a lot of questions, but we can move on.
And we're, I mean, I think as we move forward, if we move forward, I think we're happy to have lots of transparent conversations with you all. We're also aware that we can't, we can't take an agency super far down this pipeline of planning when there's an unknown about whether or not it's real.
But there's only a week to have those transparent conversations.
Well, no, this conversation has started much more than a week ago.
Well, I, I know, but to be, council hasn't been included in those, or at least I have not been included, even though downtown is my district. And so to have some input into how this goes, I think is really important. And I think before we vote, I think we should know the exact location of where they plan to locate, and we need a lot more background details.
If, if we had that, you would have it. We don't have that.
I just think, I think we should defer until we do. I, I really do.
Well, I, I think we're going to have a hard time keeping agencies engaged and looking at properties if there's no commitment. They can't take on this kind of risk and sign letters or engage in contract deals. The, the real estate market is quick. I guess, I mean, we, the building that CAT looked at was a really good fit for their operation. It's gone, right? These things are moving very quickly. So I think part of it too is like, if, if we're in good faith and agreement that we need to decon or get services, change the models, make some better investments strategically with one-time funds, I think agencies need to know that there's a commitment on our end so that they can in good faith go look at properties and then turn to those agreements. That was part of the problem last time is, they were doing that, they incurred a lot of cost under the, the last, let's move House of Charity movement, and then regained none of those costs and never moved. So I think, I think we're trying to show an effort of good faith that we're, we're serious about supporting you in this. We're not, and we're going to make that a commitment so that you feel like you can take the risk to enter into agreements on real estate transactions.
All right. Thank you, Don.
You bet. Did you have some thoughts?
I was just going to explain to the public the process around this recommendation. So the, this recommendation comes from the ARPA work group that did not have unanimous support on this.
Who dissented?
There's only two council members sponsoring this. But the process wise, we had the dot exercise here. And from that, it became pretty clear that there were, was a tier of support for the top three proposals. We've already talked about the reallocation, so that part we've talked about before, about what people are comfortable with clawing back. So we last met last week about reallocating. And the reallocations, the top ones were those three recommendations on the Catholic Charities CAT and then childcare center capital projects. And so what we did is fully fund the first two, because those were the top two, and the third one with the remaining dollars, put it on there for the third one. So that was the process of how we came up with that recommendation. I think since then, from that dot exercise, we've all heard about the criminal justice funding. And questions was just to council if that changed considerations or not. If it does, you can let the council work group know and we can amend this or we can offer amendments to this. But that's how we came up with this recommendation. All of those had super, strong support, I should say. And just a reminder, any ARPA reallocation is an SBO, so it does require five votes to do any sort of reallocation or clawing back of any items.
All right. And I just want to speak to the childcare. We've given a lot of lip service to childcare. And we have paid childcare employees and providers through ARPA for lost wages and to get them up to speed. But we have not invested in capacity building for childcare. So there is a childcare in the Northeast District One who is expanding services, expanding hours to nights and overnight if needed in the community. They've gotten great state and federal, but they've gotten no city support going forward. And so we had a chance to meet with the operator today with the proposal. They'll be coming to us in more detail. But whether it's this childcare provider or another one, we have to look at capacity building if we're going to meet the needs of our employees. Councilmember Kat Card?
Yeah. Interesting to hear it's District One. This is the first I've heard about it, except for the confusion a couple of weeks ago when this was brought forward. I know nothing about the project. I don't know anything background about it, how many families are served. There's no details that I know. And so would love to get that before we actually vote on this. But I also would just love to understand in the ARPA process, how did this get rated above additional support for the ongoing childcare program in Northeast that the PDA is involved in?
Wasn't a proposal.
Wasn't a proposal, never came?
Well, this, I've never even heard about this. So where did this come from?
It was a council member, council members all got to list their priorities and that was one that was listed.
Well, I, I realize that. But where did it come from?
Oh, it came from me. I mean, as far as supporting the expansion of this childcare center. But the one in the PDA, there was something else going on there, but...
Yeah, we're, we're continuing to seek state and federal funds on that. But I'm just wondering, I mean, how this kind of jumped into the, to the line when there was never even a discussion about this. We allocated three and a half million for childcare and this never came up at that time. And since then, we've had a couple of meetings on that childcare ARPA and there's never been one mention of a program like this. So I'm extremely concerned that somehow things are bypassing normal order. And if not, I just would love to have some input into some of this. And you said you had a meeting with them today. I would have loved to have been included in that since it's my district.
Councilmember Klitschke?
Yeah, I'd be happy to connect you with the lead on that project. I think maybe why you didn't know it was your district is because they, it wasn't that long ago that they recently identified the property and bought it. So it could have been anywhere. But the, the state and federal funding's been there for a while. And then they have some local support as well, some of whom you might know. So be happy, I think you would like the project, so...
Well, I just think the applicant should reach out to the council members that represent that district, so...
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened there.
Yeah, so on this, I have, I have a lot of things to say about this RFP altogether or this, this ordinance altogether. But on that, can you go through? Because one of the things I wanted to know is, they have received state and federal assistance and it's a substantial amount, correct?
Define substantial. They have received monies to help purchase the building.
How much money?
I have it on my note on my pad. I don't have it at this point. I think the total project was like $3.4 million.
And they've received over $2 million?
And they received some state and federal and some local matches going forward, yes.
And, but in government money, I believe it's over $2 million. And then the community partners? Can you give us some of the community partners? Because I've heard a number of them as well.
The only one I remember is Dave Black, but that's just because I don't remember.
Avista, I knew was in there.
Power Help Foundation has supported them as well.
Yeah. My, I guess my problem with this is not the fact that it's childcare, expanding its, its services into, you know, the non-traditional hours, which is something we have been advocating for. And I did put in an ARPA proposal of 350,000 for the, for the Northeast proposal that we've been working on to get federal, state, community dollars for that as well. And that was not considered. And so there are, that has been moved forward and it was just a no. The 1.8 million for CAT, I just, I, I can't get their 1.8 million dollars again to, to fully fund and, and buy a facility for somebody. The, the 3 million for, for Catholic charities again, you know, I just, there are other dollars that we can use for this that would, that would also accomplish this exact same thing. Because the number four rated project, I believe, was clean and safe, which is also an incredibly necessary project for us to do downtown. And a million dollars for that would give us two years' worth of services downtown to help clean up the trash. Because as we're talking about the, the issues that we're having, one of the things that cannot be ignored is again, that we are, we have, even if we move it a couple blocks, we still have a large concentration of a difficult population downtown that is causing us a lot of problems, that we must be mitigating those. And we're not mitigating those currently and we don't have the ability to. Spoke with the mayor today. We do have the ability to access some funds from Commerce, but they're reimbursed. We need monies to start with it. And if nothing else, I think a half a million from ARPA should go to at least start this project. That is something that could be refunded to the city as we're going forward. We just need the initial investment. And so this is our last little bit of ARPA dollars. And we need projects that we know can get out the door. And we need to be as precise with these dollars as possible. And I just think using the, the remaining 4 million, whatever that we have right here, the 4.8, whatever, I just, I, I think that this is a bad, a bad final usage of the dollars.
Councilmember Kat Card?
Yeah, I just, to hear that you did put forward that request through ARPA just adds more frustration, I guess. I, I would love to just understand what the data points were, why one was picked over the other. So I'll make that formal request with the ARPA committee.
I'm just going to say it again. We were all here and we all had the dots. And it was an open request to any council member to put any project that they wanted on the dot exercise. That was the process. It was, this is the last round. Whatever any council member wants, you can put on the board. And we were even handwriting stuff. So that is why the last recommendations came forward.
Yeah, but that's so, that's so disingenuous and it's so frustrating. Because if something was already brought forward and was already shot down, then what is the purpose of us continuing to see these things get shot down over and over and over again? This is such a frustrating argument.
But I, I also put a dot next to that. And had I known that that was not the request for Northeast that we had been working on so hard, I would have probably done otherwise. So it may falsely have made it into the top tier because we did not have all the information as what it was. I was understood and I even made a big pronouncement before Jonathan corrected me about how grateful I was that we were putting 800,000 into this project and then only to come to find out that it's something I've never even heard of. So the ARPA committee obviously vetted it and that's how it made its way forward. And if not, then why not?
So let's remember how the ARPA dollars can be used. It has to be something sustainable, long-term investment, one-time monies. And that's how a lot of this got to where we're at today. I do support downtown safe and clean, but where's the sustainability of that? When we talk about capital is an appropriate use of ARPA dollars? We've discussed this over the last year. So those are some other considerations that I took into my decision-making process as
Just to go back, there have been lots of iterations. I haven't been on the ARPA work group from its conception. But when I came into office, there was a process, there were the town halls. And that was a process of community-driven, lots of different tranches. And we created a dot exercise then. So there's gone through a process and each of those, they were scored based on priorities of all council members, not any one council member. But all council members had multiple opportunities to say, these were my priorities. They got to be part of the dot exercise. So this last time, it was, was literally whatever any council member wants, whatever it is, this is your chance to bring up something new, something old, whatever you want. And so no council member had any idea shot down. It was all on the board of what they brought and told Jacoby before the meeting.
But what was up there said Northeast Childcare, which implies that it's the project we've been involved in. And then to find out after the fact, that's not what we were talking about at all, I, I'm going to propose an amendment that we redirect those funds to the other project because I don't understand how one project got picked over the other when it said Northeast
Okay. Any other discussion on that? All right. Can I get, go ahead.
So then we do have one emergency ordinance, ordinance C36482. I believe Chris Wright, you're going to take this one.
Ironically, this would not pass as an emergency ordinance under the new emergency ordinance that's going to be discussed tonight. This was an ordinance we passed last year to provide for a fee for short-term rental platforms, per-night fee of $4. Almost as soon as the ink was dry on that ordinance, legal expressed concerns about whether or not the ordinance was a lawful tax. And so it's never been enforced while that conversation continued for several months. Under the prior administration, there was an effort to amend the ordinance and perhaps make it a defensible fee and regulation of short-term rentals. That effort stopped under the current administration while they studied it further. We deferred this from March 4th till May 13th, waiting for the administration to indicate what they wanted to do with it. The final word was that they want to do a repeal of the entire short-term rental fee, platform fee. So this is a repeal. It's a very straightforward ordinance. It also removes the emergency clause that was in the original one. So the effect of adopting this would be to make it a first reading tonight and a final reading next week.
Can I get a motion on that? To adopt the proposed amendment?
Oh, so moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. Councilmember Klitschke?
So we're clear, it's, it's not, we're not acting as if this is an emergency. We just called that in the past. Is that what the issue is? Okay, thank you.
It was an emergency in December. It's not an emergency now.
And we're removing the fee. They still have to pay the registration. They still have to register the business, but there will not be a nightly platform fee. And we also weighed on some direction from the legislature, which was another reason for the deferral process. So there's a motion to forward to adopt the proposed amendment. Is there a second? Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes, abstentions, that is adopted.
All right, we do have two final read ordinances. These have both been briefed a couple of times, just house cleaning items. So Matt or Adam aren't available today, but if there are any additional questions between now and then, feel free to reach out.
Not on this. I just was wondering if there was interest from council for canceling this meeting? There's not a lot on here that I think is urgent. I think the SBO probably, actually probably needs a week anyway to talk about a little bit more for the ARPA. The short-term rental isn't something urgent for that week. And the other two are kind of more administrative, I believe. I think the Matt's was also administrative, right? So I don't think there's anything super urgent on the agenda that if there was also interest.
I'm, I'm fine canceling the ledge. Are you suggesting the 3:32 or?
No, just ledge.
Okay.
So it'd be deferring everything to the next week's meeting. And canceling the ledge and deferring all of these agenda items for one week, except for the previous deferrals.
for the previous deferrals. Hopefully Ms. Fister is okay with, there's not an official motion.
We still have the 3:30 briefing, is that what?
Yes.
Okay, but just canceling the 6 o'clock.
So that you could, we could brief the advance for the previous, next week.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'll, I'll make a motion to cancel the legislative meeting next week and defer the remaining items to the following week. I'll second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, noes?
No.
Abstentions? The ayes have it?